We could open up our snack packages without using our fingers. It was really fun to watch and they realized how much we use just little things that we take for granted. So we printed this item and we printed it out. Ms. Tatchet Torrey was once again lovely. She last year during COVID held small Google meets since kids couldn't meet in different classrooms. This year she supported me with coming in and teaching lessons to the kids on how to use Tinkercad and tips and tricks. And I'm not good with that program, I found out. The kids were amazing. And she came in at the end this year. We found out that we had to do a video submission. So I frantically emailed my friend and she came in with a camera, with a microphone, and we set like a little set in our classroom as you're about to see. And the kids really loved it. She was very sweet. She was very kind and patient with the kids and it was just a really lovely experience. So we have her and Rodney available to us in the district. Anyone could ask them to come in and help and they truly are wonderful. So I want to give them a big shout out. This is our video submission of our project that the kids wrote the scripts and everything for. I found out on Thursday that we are national finalists. So we are in the top five for the iterative design for children under the age of 12. And so July first, they're going to announce the winners. If we win our category, then our school wins a 3D printer for our age group. The prizes get bigger as you get older and there's some really impressive things on the website. But super proud of the kids. They did a wonderful job.
Hello, we are Ms. Robinson's fifth grade class at Orwell Village School. This is our entry for the Make Able Challenge.
So our prototypes are designed to help people specifically with arthritis, to raise eyeglasses and adjust them on their face.
While researching people with disabilities, we came across Michaela Noble's blog where she explained her recent gymnastics injury. She injured herself while tumbling in her friend's backyard and became quadriplegic. Her videos showed us everyday struggles of her life. It made us realize how much our hands impacted our everyday life. And we decided to make a design that would help people hold things comfortably and without struggles.
We started out by having everyone brainstorm possible products. Next, we had small groups, smart group breakouts to bounce ideas off one another. Then we met as a class to finalize our intended products and purpose.
So this is the original sketch of our project. Which is much different than the final product. And you will see that later in the video.
Ms. Catchet Torrey came to show us Tinkercad and the tech that comes with it in order to 3D print our prototypes. This is where we made most of the changes to our designs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you have any decision making or did you have any ability to choose a different substrate? Like based off the design as far as type of plastic or if it was more of a rubbery type of?
We have something very brutal and we have several roles stuck in there. And there were certain things that we used in our 3D printer. It is a basic 3D printer. So I went ahead and chose what we had.
Yeah, cool.
There didn't cost anything.
Yeah.
Courtney, did you happen to have a conversation? The student saw this as kind of like hands-on or experiential in any way? The design process and creating something with a 3D printer?
Did I talk to them in the back?
Did they happen to see it as that or was it just like, oh, that was fun?
Yes, this group is really, really strengthened. I feel like each class has something different that they need each year. And they love to learn and they love academics and they have great 3D printers. But we did a VDL with the first trimester with social studies.
Got it.
And we learned about social studies in our government. And then the end product was the VDL. They got to get groups to work on creating their own community based on what they learned. And sitting back, we realized this is what they needed. They were struggling with the social because of COVID and remote learning. There were tears in my one eyed look. The kids cried over it. I'm giving them a mail and I'm seeing can they use their words? And then we talked about what really matters. Everyone wants to have something to get their way. You know, like those life skills that 2D, 3D. Because we've been so frustrated, they did it. So when I did that, they knew it was a project we were studying. And so I would like step in and from what I learned from the first VDL, help communicate. And then I'd step out and say, no, you guys do it. And we just kept coming knowing, doing it that way. Their growth on their social skills was so much better with this. And it had TinkerPod, so there was more vibe in it too. But they liked it and they liked knowing that some of the winning pieces actually will be produced and sold for people to use. So they see that real life protection.
Are we able to get a patent on it?
I'm sorry?
Are we able to get a patent?
We, I think, young man has demonstrated to the project. I can completely see him creating his own.
Any other questions? Well, thanks so much, Courtney.
Yeah, it's a great chat.
All right, public comment. We'll start with people here. Is there anyone from the public who has a comment? If so, please step forward and identify yourself. Sure.
Hi there. I just wanted to know if there's any way to get the agenda for the meeting out sooner than the day of. This morning, it still wasn't posted and then after it was there. So you know that also it's a bit in the library, so it's not accessible.
Where did you check? Just the website?
Yes, on the meeting itself, the agenda itself, it says, yes, hi.
Give a response. I know typically as board members, we got them for five days in advance.
My understanding was it was posted Thursday, but I don't know specifically. I'd have to look into it.
You're correct. We'll follow up to see the reason why it wasn't done this particular time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening from in-person audience? Is there anyone online attending virtually who has a public comment? Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Just a few pieces from our schools. A thank you from Orwell and Fairhaven Grade School for the goodies we provided for Teacher Appreciation Week. Certainly you're welcome. Thank you for all you do. And then another one that all board members received was an invitation to the 50th anniversary celebration at Castleton Elementary School, which is this Wednesday, the 25th. I'm just curious to know if any board members were planning to attend that. Julie, Tony's gonna be there.
Golf night.
Golf night, okay. See where your priorities lie.
I mean, I can swing, I'll try to swing by.
I have a baseball game.
Is it six to seven thirty though? Is it six to seven thirty?
Yeah.
It says six o'clock.
Six. Doesn't say how long.
It doesn't say how long.
No, until one o'clock in the morning. Field party to start at nine PM. So stick around. BYOB, is it?
Yeah, right.
All right, no other correspondence to your office? No? All righty, so committees, we'll start with buildings and grounds. Peter, we met before this meeting. What do you got for us?
Kim put on there six to seven.
Six to seven.
Yeah.
So we met, talked about the elevator at the high school. The lead time for the elevator itself is six months. So it wouldn't be in until like October. So we decided to go ahead with getting it ready for the elevator. So they'll do all the demolition work and getting everything ready. And then it will sit empty and then the following summer we'll have the elevator and they'll be able to put it in. That way we're not doing it during school and with all the kids and everything around. The cost is going to be between $900,000 and a million. That's about the best we can do. For the middle school project, the roof is getting ready to go on. All the panels are there. They're still working on the nurse's office and the problem we had there of the rotten wall. The doors are supposed to be here tomorrow so they can sheet rock. And but everything seems to be going on schedule and everything's coming along good with the middle school. So. And then as far as other schools and work, just normal maintenance in them. Some of the schools where the seventh, eighth graders are moving out of, they're going to be moving some classrooms around and expanding some areas and stuff like that. So that's basically it, unless there's a question.
Any questions here in person? Any questions from our board members online about buildings and grounds or the middle school progress?
Peter, do you want to talk about fuel?
What?
Fuel oil.
Oh, fuel oil, yeah.
Nobody wants to talk about.
I want to talk about that.
So in our budget, it was, we think about $3 a gallon we were planning on. And as everybody knows, it's well beyond that. Of course, when we thought that, we never thought fuel would be coming close to $6 a gallon. So anyways, we've decided to wait on putting out the bid to see what the market does. And hopefully, as we get towards the end of the summer, it will hopefully start to come down. Cross our fingers. That's where we're at with fuel oil.
I mean, in effect, we usually use about 100,000 gallons. So 300,000 versus 600,000. It's a significant amount of.
What if we buy everybody a sweatshirt?
Or we make everybody buy a sweatshirt.
He did sweatshirt with that. All right.
What's the current year's contract price per gallon?
The contract price is $1.25.
So we went from $1.25 current year and then we budgeted three to 350 in the budget that was passed. And in the last five months, it's now gone market price $6, so.
Okay.
So of that $100,000 or 100,000 gallons, do you have any idea how much of that went to heat Castleton Village School? It will be a minor savings, but.
It'll be some savings, but Cheryl's on the call. I don't believe we budgeted any fuel for them anyways. So they're not really included in there anyways.
That's correct. We took it all out of the budget, so they're going to be a saving.
You tried, John. All right, any other questions, buildings and grounds related? Okay, policy committee also met prior to the meeting.
I'm gonna cover because Tanya isn't gonna be on.
Okay.
Okay. So we have only one policy to adopt tonight that we had, we had warned two, but I'll talk about the second one after. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy E20, Community Use of the School Facilities.
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion about policy E20?
I had a question, Brooke, maybe you could answer. I just read the policy and it makes mention of just entities like the Boys and Girls Club and it was like historical precedent and court cases about certain groups that are allowed to use it or not allowed to use it. I'm just curious how that's, why are they singled out in that policy? Or why are they given kind of special? To use school facilities?
You mean the Boys and Girls Clubs specifically?
Oh, I mean, just read the policy. You know, they just give you all these legal references.
The legal references usually have to do with.
Sisters of America, the Boys and Girls Club, Future Farmers of America. All these groups have been singled out as being allowed.
Because there's been some probably legal court.
Okay.
Case, there's been some legal case on those specific groups.
Okay.
And the courts have decided that they are allowed to use school facilities. Yep.
Thank you.
I do have one on that same section here. The Boy Scout America now actually due by Scouts BSAs since they, a couple of years ago, allowed girls to.
Yeah, I think that's just referring though to the, is that, you're talking about the section under legal references?
Under, well, I was under.
Oh, the top of the page.
Yeah.
Yep, we can, we can, yep, make that.
All right, any other questions on policy 20?
The only thing, we would start this July 1st.
July 1st.
For the Articles of Agreement.
Correct.
So everybody would have a unified building use policy.
All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving or adopting policy E20, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that one has carried. Tony, that's.
Okay, if you take, if you look, D31 is Selecting Library Materials that we warned last time. But there is also now a D22 with this selection of library materials. So this one, the D22, came from the Vermont School Boards Association. And we decided that we liked that one better than the one that we had had before. So tonight we have three policies that we'd like to warn. First one is D22, Selection of Library Materials. The second one is C14, Section 504 and ADA Grievance Protocols. And policy C29, District Equity. And these were V S B A policies.
Second.
On the district, on the district equity, we just want to remove the last sentence because the superintendent already does report on equity to us through our strategic plan reports. So we don't see a need for another report that the superintendent needs to give us just on equity. In other words, it's part of our strategic plan anyway.
So Tony made the motion and Julie, you seconded?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there any questions or discussion on the warning of those three policies? I just have a couple of questions. Do we then have to rescind the previous warning for D31?
We talked about that and because we didn't adopt it, I don't know if we need to rescind that.
Okay, that's fine by me. And what made D22 preferred over D31? Was it just more?
It was, it was Vermont School Boards Association.
It was more general and broad, I think, other than specific.
Yep.
And it just came out two weeks ago, so. It came out in interim, so.
And then regarding policy C29, District Equity. I guess just to familiarize myself, I know we've talked about having like a separate equity committee to lots of variety of issues and I think we've been encouraged to do that. We've not done that, I don't believe.
We have had a district equity committee. This year we, we did not. Last year that committee ran throughout the district. This year, that work is happening more in individual buildings. I know Ben and I today met with students at the high school around some issues that they wanted to discuss with us. So it's been much more rather than a district committee. It's been, that work's been taking place more at the building, building levels. Ben, I know, I know you're on. Ben's also been having community potlucks at the high school where the community is invited to come in along with students and have these types of equity conversations.
So I just didn't know if the policy is getting ahead of the work that board, the board itself should be doing or not doing. That's not the case.
I don't know if it's getting ahead. I think we are doing the, I think we're doing the work. We've been doing the work for several years. If the board wants to do more specific work or education, you know, around equity in the district, we can certainly do that. I think we have had a definition of equity in our strategic plan for years now. And this is in keeping with that.
All right, any other questions on these three policies? All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of warning policy D?
Christine Puyat has her hand.
Oh, yep, sorry.
I'm sorry, Christine, go ahead.
I think she raised it for this.
I just, yeah, I just have a quick question under the definitions under District Equity. I know this is a V S B A policy, but I'm not really quite sure that I understand what C means. I think I do, but I'm not really positive. So does that mean that if a student, you go ahead and explain it to me and then I'll.
Yeah.
Ask if I.
So right now, for example, this is, we just talked about this in the policy committee. Right now, school districts in the Agency of Education snapshot, we might have students in certain groups that are lower performing than other groups of students. So for example, our socio-economically disadvantaged students traditionally perform lower on state assessments. It's a statewide issue. And so that basically means we may have to put more resources, more staffing, more professional development, et cetera, to those marginalized groups.
All right, that's what I thought.
Budgeting or anything like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear because I, I wasn't really quite sure. But I thought that's what it was, but.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that, you know, everyone gets equal.
You good, Christine?
Yep.
Are there any other questions or discussion? All righty then, all those in favor of warning policy D22, C14 and C29, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And anyone opposed? All righty, so that's it for the committees. Moving on now to job descriptions. There was one for, I believe, the newly created digital ARPS teacher, which we have hired and filled. And then the Workplace Exploration and Entrepreneurship Educator.
Which we filled.
Which we filled. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve those job descriptions.
Second.
So Peter motion, Julie second. Is there any questions or discussion on those two job descriptions? All righty, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, contract list, which was quite lengthy this time around, right?
Yeah, but that contract list is actually based off the new master agreement. So I don't know if you want to approve the new master agreement or not first.
Are there any new contracts, like new hires that we need to consider? Or just?
The only one, I believe, is Sarah Winter, who we're hiring back as a special educator. She previously worked for our district. I believe she's the only new one from last time. So, but she's known to us.
All right, so we got number nine contracts, number 10 SBA, but that's spelled in, what's that supposed to be?
SBA. Slate Valley Educ, that, that's just a typo. That's what I was, it's, it should say S V E A Master Agreement.
Okay.
That's correct, correct.
All right, so you're suggesting that we ratify the master agreements first and then go ahead and approve the contracts that are listed at the amounts, the new amounts under that agreement.
Correct.
All righty, so there was a summary included in our packet about the key points, the key changes to the master agreement. I guess I would take a motion to approve that and then we can spend all the time you want to discuss the changes. Let them move.
Second.
Second.
So do you want to highlight anything in here, Brooke? Or do you want me to highlight anything in here? Or is it still confidential until we all say aye?
No, I mean, I think you can talk about it. The union ratified it on Friday, so.
Okay. All right, well, I'll give a quick summary. It's, I guess first off, does anyone have any questions specifically about it before I give a quick summary? You know, the negotiations process was, as they always are, frustrating at times, but certainly we got an agreement here in the end. I think we started in October or November. We got a little bit of a late start, but we're pleased that we were able to settle and get this finalized by the end of the school year. And a change from recent precedent, this is a multi-year contract, three years. So that would start this July 22 for the 22, 23, 23, 24 and 24, 25 school years. And the new money associated with each of those years would be 5.5% for this next year, 4.5%. And then lastly, in year three, 4%. So that was new money, meaning an increase over the current salary amount. The teachers negotiated, we agreed that the indices would remain the same. The number of columns, steps would remain the same. And that teachers would in fact receive a step. And that process in itself does take up a considerable amount of the new money agreed to. The residual amounts after everyone receives their step is applied as an increase to the base amount, which is in the upper left-hand corner of the salary schedule. And those increases to that base amount step are summarized on the second page, 16.1. The teachers also received some new benefits along with the settlement. The teachers also received some new benefits along with the settlement. In year one, this coming year, the group will be receiving dental insurance.
That summary was not attached to our board stuff, just so you know.
It was a, it was a separate...
It was a separate email. It did not, it was a separate email.
Additional attachment, thank you.
The teachers will be receiving dental insurance for the first time, starting this July. The board, we will be contributing eighty percent of the premium for any tier of coverage, whether it be single, two-person, or family. And that's kind of consistent with the healthcare benefits that we're obliged to provide. In year two, starting in July twenty-twenty-three, two additional benefits will come on board, which are summarized on the third page, one being long-term disability insurance and another life insurance. There's not a significant amount of cost associated with these two benefits. And I think in offering them, we kind of fall more in line with our peer districts and what they offer their staff. So these are not unprecedented offerings that we made. You know, then there were some tweaks that you all can read about, just in terms of, you know, sick bank. I think they only have to enroll in the sick bank once per their tenure here in the district as opposed to every year. And then there was just some changes made to administration of the sick bank, personal days, et cetera. You guys can read all that stuff. I think I've covered the main points. So... Is there any general thoughts, discussion, concerns, anything about the teachers' master agreement before we look to approve it and ratify it?
I just got one. What's a step? So you have step one, two, so what's the difference?
I'll defer to Cheryl on that one.
On the pay rate?
Well...
How do you get to two, three, four? Is it years or...
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's years to increase in step, but the step doesn't necessarily equate to years. Because part of the problem in our district was we had different placement schedules. And then I believe for the last ten years, six out of the last ten years, we froze staff on step, which created, made everyone kind of get out of whack. And so now we're trying to correct that and give people steps every year. So it's not, it's not like you have two years' experience, you're on step two. There's a placement schedule that goes along with it. Nothing straightforward. Yeah, there will be one day. That is the hope.
Are there any other questions, concerns, discussion on the teachers' agreement? I forget. Has someone made a motion on this one yet?
We did.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So before I call the question again, just special thanks to the committee, the negotiations committee, who took time out of their schedule to be a part of this process and to educate themselves. And certainly, a special thanks to the teachers and their union committee led by, it was Helen Alexander this time, along with Nate Morris. Thank you for your participation in this process. So if nothing further, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving, ratifying the teachers' master agreements for school years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five? Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Alright, so number eleven, ten slash eleven is done. So now I would, another attachment in our packet was all our existing staff and what their salary will be under the now approved master agreement. I believe that all these people on this list had previously been offered a letter of intent, and obviously sought and returned the letter of intent. And now we're basically converting those to actual contracts.
With the exception of Sarah Winter, who did not receive a letter of intent, she'll receive a contract.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept as listed. Is that what you want?
It's actually, every name?
I'll start at the bottom.
For the record...
And I'll do it in monetary order.
Psych.
Alright, so as, as listed.
Yes, that's sufficient.
As listed.
Second. Any questions or discussion on the teachers' contracts for the twenty-two, twenty-three year? Okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 And then? Anyone opposed? Okay. Alright, moving on to other business, number twelve. Does anyone have any other business? Anyone online? I just have one piece of other business. You can help me on this one. But I believe it's annually, the V S B A reaches out to each school board and asks if any school board would like to introduce a resolution. What is a resolution? I don't know. Is it a statement of position? This is how we feel. This is what I'd like to see done. I'm not quite sure. Historically, our board has not really offered up any resolutions to the V S B A, and they sent out a courtesy reminder to me to make sure our board was aware that the deadline is approaching sometime in June for us to submit any resolutions. So I just offer that out there for consideration. Anyone wants to bring something to our attention to consider? Okay. I think I did my job, right?
Okay.
Alright, nothing else, no other business?
No.
Should probably just permanently move executive session to the last item.
Yeah, we can do that.
So I'll do it now, but before we recess from executive session, agenda building for the next meeting, which is June thirteenth, a busy week.
Yeah, nothing, hopefully some more contracts for some open positions. We would probably... Nothing's really coming to mind.
So I know you and some of the principals have obviously sent out important dates. It's a busy time of year. Do you need any, what do you need from the board in terms of people committing to certain things, participation? I guess, is there anything you want to make sure that we're aware of, that we need to attend?
Yeah, I mean, certainly graduations are super important. If we can have representatives at all of those, that would be super helpful, especially the high school graduation. I don't know if it's easier if I send out a reminder of all of those dates to you again, and we just kind of have a sign-up form, and I can let principals know who's planning on going to what. That might be an easier way to do it versus then all these emails going back and forth. Alright, I can do that tomorrow. We have the Castleton Village School. You know, the closing of that building, I believe that's the ninth off the top of my head. So that would be really important for folks to attend if they're available. The awards, high school awards night, I believe, is the ninth as well. This is all off the top of my head, so, but I will confirm via email with you all of those dates, and I'll send out a sign-up for all of that, so we kind of know who to expect when. But yes, busy time of year. If you want to have something to do every night, if you don't, you certainly can. So...
Okay, I think I mentioned the Chris call. Maybe next meeting, for those interested, we can stick around after the board meeting and have a tour of the middle school process, progress. So keep that in mind.
Cheryl has her hand raised.
Cheryl?
Yep, I'll have some food service items. I think we'll have the renewal on the contract for next year. I think also we'll have the board resolution for the new treasurer that will be starting on July first. Don Custer will, you'll have to pass a new resolution with her as a signer on the counts. So I'll have that for your next meeting.
Alright, Cheryl, thank you. Alright, so if there's nothing else to be mindful of for agenda building, we'd next move into executive session. I'd take a motion to go into executive session for a student matter. And who's invited to stay, Brooke?
Just me, yes.
Just you?
Fine.
Okay. Let them move.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor of going into executive session for a student matter, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.